Janice, are you about ready?
I am ready when you are.
Okay. So it's nine o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to today's planning commission meeting of September 23rd. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance and Janice, could you please lead us in that?
For which stands one nation, our God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janice, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
And Lisa Ketchum here, too.
And Lisa Ketchum, I'm sorry.
Janice, will you explain the rules for the audience out there, how they can interact with us today?
For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we'll use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt and connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you can not raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking.
Thank you. We have minutes that are in front of us. Is there any additions, changes, or corrections? If not, I'll take a motion to accept.
I move, we accept the minutes as revised for September 9th. I second.
Okay, well, I'll call for a roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
You need to add me here.
Oh, there. Aye!
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Chairman Hansen?
Aye.
At the beginning of every planning permission meeting, we have a period. The people could address the commission for items that are not on today's agenda. Is there any requests so far? Do we know of anybody who wish to speak to the commission for items not on today's agenda?
I actually do see one hand raised for this item. Give me just one second. We have Ron Sturgeon. Please hold on just a second.
I would like to let Ron know that beforehand that these are issues that you bring before us makes us, allows to be aware, but at the same time, we cannot make, take any action today.
Thank you. Ron, please accept this request, unmute your microphone, and begin speaking. You'll have two minutes and you'll be notified when the time ends. Ron? Ron?
Yes, thank you. President Hansen and fellow commissioners, I would like to request that the item on your today's consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda in that I would like to speak to it. I have emailed you regarding this proposal. And I won't repeat what I would, I included in my email, but I made other comments.
It's over.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who wish to speak to the commission?
We do not.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go to our agenda. We have three items today. And Janice, will you read in the first item, please?
Item number one, owner Marsh Robert N. E. and Julia M. T. R. S., applicant Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, file number PLN 202000236, location 1,000 Berry Road, Half Moon Bay. This is in District Three, and the project planner is William Gibson.
Just a procedural question. Does there need to be a vote to move this from the consent agenda and to accept the agenda?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, that we move it out of consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Yes.
I second.
Do we have to vote?
It'd be best if you did. It's not technically necessary, but now that there's a motion on the floor, you should probably deal with it.
Okay.
So I have a first and a second, right? Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Chairman Hansen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let me just share my screen quickly here.
Okay, so you should be seeing the presentation at this point. So, so, good morning commissioners. As Janice said, this project is in the rural south coast and it is the consideration request by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District pursuant to government code section 650402 to determine if their proposed acquisition of a 54% interest in the 600 acre roughly South Cow Ranch property adjacent to Purisma Creek Redwoods Open Space Reserve conforms to the county's general plan. Again, and this just reiterates, this is a general plan conformity request pursuant to the government code. I thought, given the comments received, it might be useful just to quickly review what government code section 65402 requires. So a local agency, which Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District constitutes, shall not acquire real property for a public purpose until the location, purpose, and extent of such acquisition has been submitted to the planning agency to determine the conformity with the adopted general plan. If the planning agency disapproves of the location purpose or extent of that acquisition, that disapproval may be overruled by the local agency. Here is a map of the site, and I would say just to note that originally, we in error sent out the notification map with the staff report that was replaced with the subsequent staff report. So this is the accurate map in case anyone had not seen the location of the site and the specific boundaries of the site. So the project that has been submitted to us for our review against the general plan is acquisition of an undivided interest in the South Cow Ranch property and intent to subdivide at a future date. Maintenance of the subject properties in their current condition indefinitely. There's no immediate plan to change the land uses, the developments in your nature on the property at this point. The, the plan at this point, as expressed to us by Mid Penn, is continued agricultural uses in combination with potential future low intensity recreation and other uses to be considered and designed in conformance with the policies of Mid Penn's service plan. And that would happen in the future. And again, any future developments would require the applicable permits and approvals that are necessary for that development. So general plan conformity analysis is not an approval or a disapproval of the acquisition per se. We do not have the authority in general to disapprove of property acquisition by an independent special district, which is a separate, separate body of the state. General plan conformity determination is an advisory finding that the agency can take into consideration or otherwise, and the analysis is limited to the general plan. So there are currently, again, no proposed changes to land uses on the subject property. The location and the purpose and extent of the acquisition as presented to us is acquisition of the undivided interest, potential future subdivision, maintenance of the current agricultural and other uses, and future assessment of appropriate recreational and other uses under MROST's service plan. So the project does not conflict with any of the policies of the general plan. When we do these analysis, we try to pull out the policies that are most potentially applicable that might be in conflict and determine whether they are consistent or not. And in this case, there's just a list here and you have in the staff report as well. The proposal as, as described as is consistent with the vegetative water fishing wildlife resources policies, soil resources policies, visual quality policies, park and recreation resource policies, and rural land use policies of the general plan, which are those that are most pertinent to potential changes to the uses of this, this site. And again, future planning for the site must be governed by Mid Penn's service plan. That service plan has been deemed consistent with the county's general plan as well. So to the extent that they are bound by that, their future actions should be consistent in, in addition. But again, future review, future approvals, and future permits as applicable will be required for any changes to the site in the future. With that, general plan conformity determination is not a project requiring environmental analysis. So there's no CQ review required for this. And the staff's recommendation is that the planning commission find that the proposed acquisition is in conformance to the county's general plan. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go through the commissioners and see if they have any questions for Will. I'll start off with Commissioner Santa Cruz. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, yes. One of which is the easement issues that they are referring on the letter for Mr. Ron. And I'd just like to, to hear a little bit more in detail about the easement issues. And another is that in the letter, he talks about the overlooked two policies, one of which is soil protective issues and the other one is productive soil resources. And I would like to kind of like hear more about that.
So the commerce, so the conservation easement that may be binding on the owners of the property is, is outside of the scope of our general plan. So they have an intent in the future to subdivide these properties. We have not, we don't have a subdivision proposal before us, and they may be precluded from doing so by an easement or multiple easements that are binding on the property. However, that is not an issue of consistency with the general plan. That may legally preclude them from doing certain things with the land in the future as they go through their planning process. That may, it's, it's, which is a fair point, but it's an irrelevant point to whether the proposal as currently before us is consistent with the general plan or otherwise. It may be that the easement after ownership is transferred binds them to a limited scope of activities. And they would have to take that into account as they go forward with their future planning. And the county would also have to take that into account if we have a subdivision proposal before us for approval or denial. So that is a point that may limit or change what uses can be, this land can be put to. But it's not an inconsistent we see with the general plan per se. So that's why we don't, we don't generally take that kind of underlying separate land use regulation into account because the government code that, that requires this analysis doesn't allow that kind of consideration. As for the two.
Okay, well, just, just hold just a minute. I just, I need a follow up question. I have a follow up. On the easement issues, if I hear you correctly, is at this point, we're talking about the subdivision of these two units. Eventually, if they want to do something, I hear you saying that easement issue is not a concern right now because eventually when they present, what do they want to do with that subdivision? By law, they have to create an easement issue. Is that what I hear correctly you're saying?
Yes. So, so what we're looking at is the acquisition of the property, the general expressed intent to subdivide it in the future in some way. And then the general intent to determine through a planning process, what are the appropriate uses for the site? They haven't proposed a specific subdivision or any specific changes in the land use for the site. So yes, the easement might preclude them. So what would happen is when they do their planning process and when they come to us for approvals for subdivision, the easement might preclude them from doing certain things and subdividing it in certain ways. It might be constraining on the uses of the site, but that is not a general plan issue.
Okay, okay. And how about the second issue?
So the second issue, you're correct. I think the commenter was correct in that those two policies are applicable policies. We did not specifically list them out. But they are, the proposal as, as before you is consistent, or the project for, for analysis before you is consistent with the soil resources policies that were called out by that comment. We did not specifically list every policy. And I think those were appropriate policies to list, and we should have, we should have specifically called them out. But it doesn't change the determination. The proposal as presented to us doesn't change the land uses or the soil uses at this point at all. So it has no impact on those soil resources policies.
So overlooking these two policies, soil protective areas, issues and productive soil resources usage, it, it's, although it's not included in the presentation or the, or the request, you, you think it doesn't violate any kind of policy?
It doesn't. I, yeah, it, it does not. I actually added those two policies into the presentation itself. They were not captured in the staff report, but it is consistent with those policies, yes.
Okay, and then the last question that I have, if I may, is does the agricultural advisory committee had to provide any kind of recommendation before moving forward with this project?
So we have in the past, at times, taken projects of this nature to the agricultural advisory committee for their review and comment. It's not a formal requirement. The, your, your commission is solely tasked with the responsibility of determining the conformity of an acquisition with the general plan. That is the planning commission's role. As an advisory method, we have sometimes taken these kinds of projects to the agricultural advisory committee. And we did schedule at the request and desire of the applicant as well. We did schedule an agricultural advisory meeting. However, and, and to just frame this, we must report on this. Your, your commission must report on this within 40 days, or it's deemed, it's deemed consistent by law. So if we don't get within that 40 day window, it's deemed consistent. The applicants were gracious enough to let us extend that to this date, which is beyond 40 days already, in order to schedule an agricultural advisory committee hearing, which was then canceled for lack of quorum. So there is no other opportunity to do so. And if your board, if your commission were to continue this item, it would be automatically deemed approved. Or deemed consistent, rather, because the time limit has run out. So in short, we tried, but did not succeed to get this to the AAC.
And when you say that there's lack of quorum, is that because of the committee didn't show up or because of the interest party?
Yes, we could got it. We could not get enough committee members together to get a meeting in the timeframe that was required.
Okay, isn't that supposed to be like, by law, they're supposed to provide that kind of services? Like, like we have a planning commission that for lack of quorum, we just deem a project to be consistent or appropriate?
So there's no requirement that this project go to the AAC at all? It's, it's more of a courtesy or kind of a practice, but by regulation, this is the task of the commission alone.
Okay. Okay, let me see. Okay, I think I have so far, so far, this is my observation. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Ramirez, do you have any questions?
Unmute Ramirez. Sorry, I didn't want to create any noise background on there. No, at the moment, I don't have any questions. My questions were similar to Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ketchum?
No questions from me, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Gupta, any questions?
Yes, yes, I have some questions. One is, I'm looking at all the different maps. One is the in the revised staff report, we have one map which is dated July 28th of this year. And then the one in Mr. Sturgeon's correspondence, those are dated later. They are August 2020. Is there anything that has changed in the meantime from what we have in the staff report?
So the map, so the map that you see in this revised staff report and in the presentation is the map that actually the applicants provided to us, which we confirmed is an accurate representation of the project. And that has not changed. That was submitted. That, and that was the time of their original submit all back in July, actually. So, which is why we are kind of at the time limit for determining whether this project conforms. There has been no change to the project. And I, I don't know what Mr. Sturgeon, the data on Mr. Sturgeon's map refers to necessarily. But, but from our perspective, the submit all has not changed and the map we have been, has been the same throughout.
Okay, okay, thank you. And this, this a trail that, again, Mr. Sturgeon has pointed out that that really cannot be built. So why is that proposed here if we are only looking at the gender, whether it conforms to the general plan?
The, yeah, it's a good point. So the, the project that has been, you know, your, your finding of general plan conformity has been requested does not include any specific trail locations. That's, that's not in the scope. And Mid Penn has not expressed to us any locations that they intend to create a trail. So I think that may be a surmise about where a trail would go. But that has not been presented to us. What Mid Penn has expressed to us is they will go through their normal planning process and determine if trails are to be created, what is the appropriate location for them based on the various constraints. And then again, they would need, in many cases, permits or other approvals, and they would, they would confer with other agencies in order to determine what the appropriate use of the site is. But we do not have a proposed trail before us.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I thought so, but, and my, I think it's my last question. I'm looking at how percentage wise the ownership is going to be taking place, like, 54%, 33% post, 13% by Marsh family. But the acreage that they will be owning is not proportional to that.
Well, that, that might be a question I would defer. I think Mike Williams is in the meeting and he might be able to speak to that a little more clearly. I, I think that may have to do with the initial interest and then the change in the subdivision that might reallocate that. But I would ask if someone from then would like to speak on that, maybe this would be appropriate time.
Okay, okay, that, that sounds fun. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Will.
Thank you. Turn it over to Janice for the public portion of this, comparing, we have people who wish to speak. You'll be given five minutes to speak to the commission, at which point we will collect all the comments and questions and deal with them in our review following closure of the public portion.
Thank you. So we are now opening public comment for item number one. If you raise your hand, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star line to raise and unraise your hand. And I do see Ron Sturgeon has his hand raised. So Ron, please accept this request and unmute your mic and begin speaking. Ron?
Thank you. And I would like to point out that this was, that this proposal was made to the Farm Bureau. And it was clearly indicated that the proposed trail through the portion of the property that Mid Penn, portion of the ranch that Mid Penn is anticipating owning in T will be along the route that I indicated. And it's also been proposed in various times that the route would be through, potentially through charisma uplands years ago. And that was one of the reasons for the district buying that property is for trail purposes. And I would like to indicate that there are other general plan policies that were overlooked by, by staff that I think pertained to where the trail should go if one is to ever be developed. And those are policies found in policy 9.30 and which provides standards to minimize land use conflicts with agriculture in the rural lands. And to this, it suggests that when avoid to the greatest extent possible locating non-agricultural activities on soils with agricultural capability or land in agriculture production. B, locate non-agricultural activities in areas of agricultural projects which cause the least disturbance to feasible agricultural activities. C, buffer any non-agricultural activities from agricultural activity. Any non-agricultural activities from agricultural activities by means of distance, physical barriers, and other non-disruptive methods. And, and B, ensure that any extension of public services and facilities to serve non-agricultural activities will not empower feasible agricultural activities. I would suggest to you that a good luck at the conservation easement over the South Cow Ranch does all those. What Mid Penn is proposing to eventually do on the South Cow Ranch is not consistent with those policies. And I plead with the commission to send this to the agricultural advisory committee for its analysis and consideration before finding, finding a determination conformity with the general plan. At this point, given what I've heard today, I would suggest that you find that it does not conform to the general plan until, and you cannot find a finding of conformity until you hear from the agricultural advisory committee. And I think that Mid Penn would consent to extending its goodwill towards hearing from the agricultural committee as it has already in that the proper was made to the, the real. what is it, Committee of Emroski that this proposal to subdivide a good portion of the Cal Ranch from the the ranch would go to the Agricultural Committee next. And I believe that the quorum at the last Agriculture Committee was, lack of the quorum was in part due to the fire. I thank you for, for mentioning.
Thank you very much. Janice, do we have any other speakers?
I do not see any other speakers. Do you want to give them a few seconds just to see?
A few seconds to see if we have any?
None.
None, okay.
Good morning. This is Mike Williams. I, I don't have a hand feature. Is it, is it okay if I speak to this matter?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman Hanson and Commissioners. To Commissioner Gupta's question, the percentage interest is based on, on the value of the property that we ultimately want to own. And what, what I did want to go over, as pointed out, Peninsula Open Space Trust at the end of June became the majority interest holder of this property with the Marsh family. In our proposed purchase, the Marsh family would continue to farm the property that they farm west of Verde Road and west of Highway 1. The existing rancher has entered into a lease with Post for the upland property. That would be assigned to the district and the ranching would continue on the property east of Verde Road under the shared ownership of the three parties. And then as Mr. Gibson's presentation mentioned, any future land division proposal would be presented to the Ag Advisor and come in front of Planning Commission. Just as any future trail planning and permits would come to the county for permits as well. As to the conservation easements that Mr. Sturgeon brought up, there are two conservation easements held by the California Coastal Conservancy. One is a conservation easement protecting agriculture, open space, scenic values, habitat. And the second is a trail and conservation easement that contemplates public trails on portions of these properties. And then Peninsula Open Space Trust holds two similar easements when, when almost 30 years ago, they sold this property to Marsh and another property owner. So there's a conservation easement and a trail and conservation easement. And one of the things that Post has been working with the Coastal Conservancy on, the current easements do allow for the subdivision of the two acre, a two acre site for the house that is on the property and for trails that are on the property. And Post has been, over the last year, in discussions with the Coastal Conservancy on amending the conservation easements, which had never contemplated at the time, public ownership by an organization that does recreation and supports agriculture. And so all, all of that is still in the works, but, but what is before you is general plan determination for the district's purchasing of a partial interest in this property. I hope that provides some clarification.
Thank you. Janice, do we have any more speakers?
There aren't any more hands raised.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson, if I may, I, I wanted to address a component of what Commissioner Gupta asked about the ownership question, which I think is important to some of the issues that are in play. California law allows multiple people to own a single parcel of real estate in a couple of different ways. It's, you know, first year law school stuff that there's a thing called the tenancy in the entirety and a thing called joint tenancy and a thing called tenancy in common. But basically, yeah.
Can I close the public? Janet, I want to call for a roll call to close the public portion.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Chairman Hanson?
Hi. Tim, please, continue.
All right. So by deductive reasoning, though I don't have the real estate documents in front of me, I, I gather that the ownership is going to be held as a tenancy in common, which means that MidPen will own 53% of the entire parcel. But the really important thing is that that doesn't correlate to any area of the parcel. The parcel remains unitary, but the ownership is shared by that percentage. So there is no line anywhere that's going to be MidPen's portion and the Marsh family's portion of the property. California law allows multiple owners each to have the right to occupy the entire parcel and to take the, the, the tenant of the profits from the entire parcel and share them according to their percentage. So there, there are legal tools that exist for multiple people to own a parcel without subdividing it in the way that's ultimately proposed. So while Mr. Williams described that the way in which they came up with 53% was by figuring out the value of the entire area that MidPen wants ultimately to hold on to, it's important to know that as of today, the parcel is undivided. The ownership is undivided. It's just that it's owned essentially by a partnership in, in some sense, a partnership between the Marsh family and MidPen, where the amount of ownership of that partnership is 53% to 47%. So I just wanted to clarify that we don't, tenancy in common doesn't involve drawing maps and saying, this is my side of the property and this is your side of the property. Both parties own the entire parcel, they just own it in that percentage.
Thank you. Will, did you have any comments from the public speakers?
I, no, I think, I think that essentially, almost everything has been covered. I would just note that, you know, again, because we don't have a specific proposal for any developments on the property for trail locations or anything else, we cannot say that future theoretical trail locations would be consistent or inconsistent with the general plan.
So I'll bring it back to the commission for any further questions or comments they wish to make. And I'll start off with Commissioner Senators.
I have a follow-up question for Tim. If subdividing based on the information he just gave us, if so, subdividing the, the parcel, at this point, we're discussing the subdivision and certain percentage, like a joint tenancy or whatever. But that subdivision does not include certain easy requirement, easement requirement. Why, like in the, like in the future, let's say I own 20%, my partners own 40% and the other one 80% to summon 54%. And in like a one year or two, it happened to be that my 20%, which is the lowest percentage, will have 40% of easement versus the other people who are having higher percent of land with less percentage of easement. Why would not consider easement at this point to avoid this kind of misconception and misunderstanding or unfair distribution in the future?
Well, one, one answer, which I think Mr. Gibson already gave, is that the only analysis that the county makes at this stage of the project is, does the acquisition of the land violate the general plan? Not, not as you're hearing from others, do the future plans for the land potentially violate the general plan? So I would be at a loss to describe any way in which the acquisition itself violates the general plan because it requires saying, what if something else happens in the future? Would that violate the general plan? The answer might be yes, but they have to apply for that thing for us to figure that out. Because they may not propose a division of land that impinges upon the easement rights of others. I don't know. I don't know what the proposal is going to look like because the only question right now is, can this agency acquire the general plan without, sorry, acquire the property without violating the general plan? And the analysis of the report is yes. And the other answer is, because we don't really have a choice, once we make that analysis, we can't impose conditions on a general plan conformity finding. It's not a permit. We're not, we're not authorizing MidPen to acquire the land. We're reporting for our own benefit, hey, MidPen just bought this land. Does it violate the general plan for them to do so? Yes, no. But even if we say yes, even if we say it violates the general plan, MidPen can still go forward with the acquisition. It's just that we will have noted that now we need to amend our general plan. So the way the code is written, we don't really engage in the question of, is this public agency going to act properly with regard to this land in the future as part of the general plan conformity analysis? We simply ask the question, hey, does this acquisition mean that we have to amend our general plan to reflect the reality that they went forward with the acquisition?
Okay.
Commissioner Gupta? Any comments? Further questions?
Actually, I have a follow-up question for Tim. You mentioned, Tim, that even if we do not approve this, MidPen can still go ahead and acquire this. Okay. And we'll have to update our general plan. Did I understand it correctly?
I'm muted, Fox.
Thanks. Yes, essentially, this is, the code calls this a report of general plan conformity. It's not a, an approval. So the yes, no question is, is answered in the form of a report for the benefit of all the parties to figure out what to do in response. Now, we have, in, in the past, made findings of general plan conformity in the negative. We've, we've, we've found that an acquisition would violate the general plan. It doesn't always mean that we prioritize changing the general plan to fix the problem. Often, the fact that it violates the general plan is kind of put in the file as a reminder that when future development is proposed on the parcel, that there may be some mitigation that needs to happen. So that's a future thing when development is proposed, as opposed to when the acquisition takes place.
If I could jump in, as I think what Tim said is is a report that informs all the parties. And wanted to decide that they didn't want to take an action that might violate the general plan. This report would inform them so that they could appropriately act what they wouldn't have to. It, it allows them to say, do I want to go ahead with this or not if it will violate the general plan?
So, so if we, if we do not, you said not approve, but if we do not, or if we say that it doesn't meet the general plan, do we give a reason why, why it's not meeting?
Yes. You're, you, you would issue, you would direct staff to issue a report that the acquisition is not consistent with the general plan, but we would need to figure out what it was inconsistent.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Ketchum, any comments?
I'd just like to thank staff for the very clear explanation of this process.
Okay. Commissioner Ramirez?
I, yeah, just to make a couple of comments on this. I think the way I look at it is, you know, there's always a time and a or the different things that need to be addressed on, on this property. And I said that at this time is basically, we're, we're just looking at the legality of the acquisition of the land and how they're, it's going to be held as a partnership. At this point, we're not trying to decide any subdivision on it. And also, which would have to deal with the easements that have been, you know, challenged on this. So that, that would have to be addressed at a, at a point when the subdivision would have to be brought forward. That's the way I understand it, unless somebody else can correct me on that. So from that point, I would say that I don't see any inconsistencies. And I would say we would be okay to approve this. That's my thoughts on this.
Thank you very much. And I'm in agreement with Commissioner Ramirez, hearing everybody's comments. It sounds like we're moving toward forward in approving of this. Can I get a motion for that?
I can do that. I move that the Planning Commission find that the proposed acquisition by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District division of an undivided 54% interest in the South Cal Ranch property, APNs number 066280010 and 020 and 050 conforms to the county general plan.
I'm going to second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, so let's go to roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
You're muted.
Commissioner? Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Chairman Hanson?
Hi. Five, zero vote. Congratulations. And we'll move on to our second item and I'll turn it over to Janice to read into the record.
Thank you. Item number two, owner of County, applicant, San Mateo County Planning and Building Department, file number PLN 2020-00119, location, unincorporated coastal zone. And once again, our project planner is Will Gibson. Will?
Thank you, Janice. Let me just share my screen once again. All right, so. So this, hello again. This project is an ordinance amending the county's accessory dwelling unit regulations applicable specifically to units within the county's coastal zone and also amending the county's local coastal program or LCP to comply with recent changes to state law. And this reiterates that point. This is chapter 22.5.1, the new coastal regulations for ADUs in the zoning regulations. So San Antonio counties, just to provide a little background, the county zoning regulations are now divided into two chapters, 22.5 and 22.5.1, which establish standards for ADUs respectively outside the coastal zone and inside the coastal zone. Both those chapters implement the state's accessory dwelling unit law, which is government code section 65852.2. And the county is required to update its regulations to comply with changes to state law. Your commission considered amendments to non-coastal regulations, chapter 2.5, back on June 24th, and recommended adoption by the board. And those amendments were adopted on September 15th. So last week, the board adopted them and they will go into effect on October 15th. Amendments to chapter 22.5.1, which was not substantively amended by the board and not substant, not reviewed by your commission, are also required to comply with state law. Those changes largely incorporate the same amendments that you've already seen as chapter 22.5, but with some distinct exceptions. And in addition, again, amendments to the county's LCP regulations for second units, now called ADUs, section 3.22 of the LCP are also required. So, so back on, on June 24th, we went through the full breadth of the amendments to chapter 22.5. I'm not going to reiterate every single one, but I just wanted to touch on the most significant. I'm not going to reiterate every single one, but I just wanted to touch on the most significant of those changes, the one that, the ones that have the most impact on the production of ADUs. And those are as follows, ADUs are no longer subject to minimum lot size. So they are allowed on any parcel that has a primary residence. The county cannot apply any standard that precludes an 800 square foot ADU with four foot setbacks. So that has changed our regulations to have an 800 square foot minimum allowed size of ADUs with four foot setbacks on the side and rear. And any other standards we might otherwise have applied such as FAR lot coverage or any others which do not allow an 800 square foot ADU are inapplicable. Attached ADUs that are built on or within the primary residence are now allowed to be at least 50% of the floor area of the primary residence. And attached ADUs within a primary residence also get an additional 150 square feet for ingress egress. The regulations now preclude the use of ADUs as short term rentals. And ADUs less than 750 square feet in size are exempt from impact fees, which include housing, parks, school fees, road mitigation fees, et cetera, and units greater than that size can only be charged in proportion to their, their square footage. Our regulations now define a junior ADU or JADU. And that is a unit entirely within the primary residence that is 500 square feet or less in size and contains at least an efficiency kitchen. So now a project is allowed to propose a detached ADU, a normal ADU outside the house that is combined with a junior ADU resulting into two accessory dwelling units on the same parcel. That can only happen on a parcel that is occupied by the owner of the parcel in perpetuity. So there is an owner occupancy requirement and our regulations now enforce that requirement. And then lastly, on parcels with existing multifamily dwellings, multiple ADUs are now allowed to be built within the multifamily structure as well as two detached ADUs outside the structure on the parcel. So up to 25% of the interior space can be converted and detached externally to use up to two can be built, but they must meet the normal ADU standards in the rest of our regulations. For the proposed amendments to the local coastal program, section 3.22 of the coastal program establishes standards for ADUs. Currently, it says that they are only allowed on R1 zone parcels. They cannot be built on parcels of less than 5,000 square feet. They have a separate square footage allowance, which varies slightly from our normal square footage requirements. They have a 466 unit cap on ADUs that may be built in the coastal zone in total. And then they require that ADUs conform to the other provisions of the LCP. So the proposed changes to that, in order to conform to the amended regulations as proposed before you today, the regulation limiting ADUs to the R1 zoning districts was removed and chapter 22.5.1 will now allow ADUs in the R1 and the R3 zoning districts only. ADUs are now allowed on parcels less than 5,000 square feet as required by state law. And the square footage allowances are removed and it just subjects them to the standards that are in 22.5.1. The portions that are unchanged, the 466 unit cap on total ADUs in the coastal zone is still left in the LCP. And ADUs also remain subject to an annual building permit limit, which is in the LCP for all residential building permits. And ADUs are still required to conform to the other provisions of the LCP. And also just as a note, we are changing the phrase second units to accessory dwelling units throughout the LCP. And also it has already been changed in chapter 22.5.1. I would note that Commissioner Ketchum noted two, three places where we missed. We had listed where those changes occur and Commissioner Ketchum very perceptively noted that there were three places we had missed those, so we would amend the ordinance to include those listings. So ADUs in the coastal zone, the main distinction from the regulations that apply elsewhere, they're still prohibited on parcels zoned RM, CZ, PAD, CZ, TPZ, and any other non-residential zoning districts such as commercial or other. Outside of the coastal zone, ADUs are allowed on any parcel that can have a residential use and has a primary residence or a multifamily residence regardless of the zoning. So even in zoning districts where they are, residential uses are conditionally allowed, an ADU would be allowed. That is not the case at this point in the coastal zone. We do intend to assess the feasibility of allowing ADUs particularly on the RM and PAD parcels. And we would take into account resource protection, the compatibility of uses. Will this intensify those uses beyond what is otherwise allowed? If they should be allowed on those parcels, should they be subject to different limitations in location? In, in primarily in location, considering what the, those sites are intended for. And then the consistency with LCP policies and with the coastal act. So given that it could be that additional amendments will come before you that propose expanding the zones in which ADUs are allowed in the coastal zone. And we may bring those back. We anticipate that as, as tends to happen every year now, we will be back next year with further changes. Both to address things we've learned about how we are applying these guidance from the state, what other jurisdictions I've seen, and, and probably more changes to the law, which seems to happen on an annual basis. So, so this may come before you again in another eight months. And there may be a proposal for, for changing those. So with that in summary, the proposed updates complete the updates to the coastal and non-coastal regulations, bringing the county into conformity with current state law. And also amends the LCP for consistency with state law and with the proposed updates to the AD regulations, both within the coast coastal zone and outside the coastal zone. The proposed amendments are not subject, oh, and by the way, LCP consistency. The proposed amendments are consistent in our determination with the other policies of the LCP and with the California Coastal Act. And again, none of this exempts ADUs from the applicable provisions of the LCP itself. They are, these changes do constitute amendments to the land use plan and implementation plan of the local coastal program as well as direct changes to the LCP. So they must be submitted to the California Coastal Commission. Should they be adopted by the board, they must be submitted to the coastal commission for their review and certification. Finally, at, because this is an implementation of the state's ADU regulations, they are, this is exempt from CEQA. In addition, the coastal commission's process of certifying the LCP is the equivalent of CEQA reviews. So even if they were not exempt, it would be covered by the California Coastal Commission process itself. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the board adopt an ordinance amending the ADU regulations applicable to the coastal zone, chapter 22.5.1, and amending section 3.22 of the county's local coastal program to comply with recent changes to state law. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Chairman Hansen, if I may just add one more thing. With regard to the RM and PAD zoning districts within our coastal zone, I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware that in addition to having a single family residence, current zoning does allow for the construction of farm labor housing as well as an affordable housing unit. So although we are not calling out ADUs as an allowable use in those districts currently, one of the reasons we're not doing that is because we believe that current property owners within that, those districts have ample opportunity to build housing. But we also need to make sure that it's done in accordance with the protection of resources and agricultural soils. So between having a single family residence, the ability to construct farm labor housing and the ability to construct an affordable housing unit, we think that that adequately addresses housing needs within those areas. So just wanted to make that point and I'm happy to help answer any questions as well.
Okay. I'll turn it over first. Ask Commissioner Ketchum, do you have any questions for staff?
Oh, yeah, thanks. In the section on requirements for ADU conditional use permit, it says they may require a CDP. So would, would that occur when the parcel is not in the categorical exclusion area or how does that work?
Yes, we, there's, there's, I, I think Steve might step in and speak a little more clearly, but yes, there, there are cases where residential uses do not require a CDP and cases when they do, and the ADUs are subject to similar, similar requirements.
Okay, and then regarding, regarding
I just want to say you were correct.
Pardon?
Sorry, you're, you were correct. You're correct that that would be outside this categorical exclusion area.
Okay, thank you. So regarding the total ADU limit in the coastal zone to, to remain 466, what is the total number of existing permitted ADUs in the coastal zone?
It is at most, we actually are doing a little more analysis, so it's at most 150. We had about 150, but that includes some permits that we have on record that we don't believe were actually built. And we're doing a little research to, it may be slightly lower than that. But it leaves us at, at least 300 units shy of the limit, which given, I did this calculation yesterday, it's about 60 years, given our average ADU production in the coastal zone. So, so we're, we're pretty far from that. We do anticipate that as, as been happening every year, production is increasing and increasing. So we will speed up in our, our kind of progress toward that, but we're fairly far away from it.
So is there an estimate on the number of unpermitted ADUs?
That is an excellent question. There is not. There, it's a very, very difficult thing to figure out. We have anecdotal reports. We have ones that we find through our code enforcement. There are various methods of trying to assess using kind of building footprint data that there may be, you know, illegal units, that's illegal structures that appear to be units. There are ways to look for second addresses, but it's a really difficult thing to comprehensively measure. And so we don't have a fix and I don't even think we have an idea of, of kind of in the order of magnitude where we are in terms of unpermitted units, unfortunately.
Yeah, I could understand how difficult that would be. I, I remember a project where the applicant wanted to put a outside stairway in the front setback to give direct access to the second floor. And of course, the question was just about whether this should be allowed in the front setback. But I asked the planner, well, it sure looks like this is for a second unit. Well, apparently that doesn't even come up in, in the whole analysis. So, I mean, it is a it is a significant loophole sort of here that I don't know how that gets dealt with. But anyway, I did notice that because I track these things, the planning applications for residential, you know, being aware of the 40 unit pre-year limit. And, and I've noticed the last few years significant increase in ADU applications in, in in 2017, there were two ADUs issued building permits. In 2018, there were seven ADUs. In 2019, there were 10 ADUs, which was over half the total of of building unit permits, building permits issued that year. And now in 2020, so far, there, there are five that have been issued building permits. And also there are 18 applications for ADUs that are in process. Some of these going back several years because they're connected with a single family dwelling. So that was interesting to notice, significant change. And I, I, it just seems like, given the cap on ADUs in the coastal zone, does it seem fair to allow two or more when no more will be allowed when it's reached?
It's an interesting question. You know, we are trying, I would say, we're trying to adhere as closely to what the state requires of us as possible. And there, you know, there are multiple ways that you could get two ADUs on a parcel now. You could get the detached ADU and a junior ADU within the house. And then there's the multifamily where you could potentially get multiple ADUs within a multifamily structure. And I would look at those a little bit differently, but in both cases, you know, the guidance we have from the state and the guidance we have from the coastal version is try to adhere as closely as possible while still maintaining consistency with the policies of the LCP and the policies of the coastal act. And, you know, when we did our analysis, we don't see in either of those cases, although, you know, you could say maybe there's an equity issue across who gets to, to create ADUs. We didn't see any inconsistencies with the policies of the LCP or the policies of the coastal act. And so we tried to, you know, and, and/or any requirements for further analysis to determine that as, as opposed to PAD or RM. And since we, you know, even though it's increasing, we have 300, 315 units left. I don't think we're reaching a kind of position of significant inequity for some time. Because we're, we're still, you know, closer to a third than we are to half. So it might be something we, we might revisit and analyze to see if, as we start to approach that or as we, we cross certain thresholds, maybe it makes sense to say we should, we should disallow the multiples to make sure that everyone has a chance to, a reasonable chance to have them. But I don't think that's a really kind of a vital question at this point, because we are so far away.
In addition, I'd add that, you know, because they're permitted within our residential districts, which are primarily within our urbanized areas by allowing these within the designated areas for development. It helps us achieve our objectives about clustering development within existing developed areas. So, but I agree with Will. I think if, if we get close, we should revisit that issue. But it seems like that will take some time.
Yeah, I do think if, if that was, you know, if, if certain people taking up multiples was going to later preclude other people in the, you know, kind of short term, the foreseeable future, that is an issue we probably should revisit. But I don't think we're reaching that at this point.
Another option too would be to not include junior ADUs within the quota. And the reason I put that on the table is because in the most cases, a junior ADU is a conversion of an existing living unit. So it oftentimes, most times, I would say, does not increase the intensity of use of the existing structure. So you're essentially swapping out, you know, a bedroom, bathroom, and maybe, you know, a living area and now getting, making that an independent unit when somebody lived there previously. So that would be a basis to potentially exclude junior ADUs from the quota if you're concerned about people kind of taking up more than their fair share.
So then related issue due to the, well, does, does allowing ADUs on substandard sized parcels make sense when the coastal commission has been urging the county to implement a mandatory substandard lot merger program in an effort to reduce LCP build out?
Well, I'm happy to try and answer that, but Will, let me ask you what the rules are about developing ADUs on substandard parcels.
Oh, the state's, the state's law is very clear. You must allow them. And that is why we, we did. Basically there, you know, it has to be a lot, obviously, that a primary residence has been built on, can be built on. If it is developable with a primary residence, they require us to allow ADUs on that parcel that meet all the other standards. And so, you know, given the, the state's guidance and the coastal version's guidance to try to adhere as closely as possible, you know, the coastal commission, when we get to them, may say, we meant as closely as possible, but we don't mean this. And they may kick that back. But at this point, we're trying to just directly implement that mandate from the state.
So have you had
just to make sure we answer this question. Would it be correct that you can only build the ADU if you have a main residence, correct?
Absolutely. In every case, in every case, you must be able to build. Yes.
The point here is that if you have a substandard lot that already has a main residence, then we've probably lost our um, then we've probably lost our opportunity to merge in the first place. Um, typically the merger occurs in conjunction with the construction of the main residence. So this is really an issue for, uh, you know, existing developed lots. And I think it provides an opportunity to cluster within existing developed lots. If you're talking about a substandard vacant parcel, unless it's already received a certificate of compliance, our update to our subdivision regulation prohibits future development of substandard lots as a condition of certificate of compliance issuance. So this will not be an issue on vacant substandard lots because, uh, unless they've already received a COC, because we're not issuing COCs without a condition that prohibits development on such lots.
Well, if you had a substandard lot with the new regulations, you could come in and ask for a primary residence and an ADU, and the ADU would have these, um, lower standards. Is that correct then?
I'm saying only if, if you have a COC already issued, condition, uh, certificate of compliance. If you didn't have a certificate of compliance for a substandard lot, you would not be able to do that.
I think essentially this change does not preclude us from still applying the policy of incentivizing lot mergers, essentially.
I guess my point was more that the, uh, and this of course is all in the, um, connect the coast side where the county is, um, considering lot retirement programs, the effort being made to reduce LCP buildout. And so those, those, um, and then, and that we're retaining the, the upper limit of ADUs, allowing them on substandard parcels and allowing more than one per parcel seems to be contradictory to that.
Well, I, I would say in combination with the annual building permit limit and the cap, um, I, I would say we see them as, you know, those are still the mechanisms that control, um, buildout. And they still apply to ADUs. This is more a change in the location of the ADUs rather than the pace or the maximum. The pace is changing because of market conditions and because of need, obviously. Uh, you know, as well as the fact that in, in cases, there are cases in which it's definitely easier. But those mechanisms that control the pace, uh, the timing of buildout are still enforceable on ADUs, uh, both annually and in total. Um, and, and I think that's a, a pretty strong mechanism that does say, um, you know, we are not going to overwhelm the infrastructure, um, because building in total is capped on an annual basis and ADUs in total are capped with the 466.
So when the, uh, 40 units per year annual limit was added to the LCP in 2012, it, it's, my understanding was that was tied to the requirement for the comprehensive transportation management plan that that annual limit couldn't be changed until that plan was provided. And we are in the home stretch of that plan, which as I understand it, is based on retaining the 40 units per year. But I mean, is, is the county, um, is the general sense that this will, this 40 units per year will be extended just forever? I mean, is that, is that, has that?
At this point, we don't have any intention to remove that, um, as an annual cap. And I don't see it in the, um, near future either, unless, um, there was to be a significant shift in the way in which we get around. Because I, I think, you know, the, the fact of, um, traffic and circulation issues is, um, extremely constraining, uh, Connect the Coastside is attempting to address those. But, um, you know, whether or not it's successful to the point that warrants change in the quota, we have yet to see. So, and the, the implementation of the projects envisioned by Connect the Coastside will take many years. And so until we've implemented those and we can see positive results, I don't think we're in a position to suggest that we change the quota.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Commissioner Ramirez, any questions?
Yeah, what, one thing I don't understand yet is how did we come up with the magic number of 466?
Um, Steve has left, that's a very good point. I, so the, the, the various caps, the cap on the annual, um, production in the, the coastal zone and the maximum were based on infrastructure analyses, um, that were done for the LCP's adoption and for its amendment. Um, but the question of exactly which infrastructure analyses led to that 466, unfortunately, um, I'm not entirely clear on, and maybe Steve could answer that. How did we come up with the 466 number? That has been baked in there for, for quite some time, but, um.
You answered it as best as I could, Will. I, I, I haven't, um, looked at that. But it's been in the LCP for quite some time. And I assume it was both a combination of infrastructure and just interest in protecting the character of the various communities and the rural areas.
Okay. Uh, yeah, because I, I'm following what you said, uh, Steve. Um, I think we're going to have a conflict with regards to, you know, the number and the junior, uh, ADUs. Uh, because I mean, the way I look at it, I mean, technically, if you have a junior, uh, unit, that doesn't mean that you're really adding more, uh, infrastructure, you know, into the area that's already there. So if you were to build, to fill, fulfill, I'm not saying that it will, but all 466 units, just on junior, uh, units, I, I think that we have a conflict on that. So I, at some point, I, I think I'd probably like to see if we revisit that, uh, the way you proposed it, uh, Will.
Anyway. I would say, Commissioner, that's, it's, I think that's a good point all around. I think we can go back at any time and say, you know, if we can get an amendment passed through your commission, through the board, through the coastal commission, that would retroactively exempt them from the cap as well. So it doesn't just have to be going forward. We could say, you know, a junior ADU should not have counted. They do not count against that cap and we could back calculate that. I think it makes sense to kind of monitor where we're going and how many of them we have. Because this is, junior ADUs are new this year. We have not previously allowed them. So I, I think we're all interested to see how that will play out. So maybe we monitor it over the next few years and as we go forward with further changes, we might want to change whether they count or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gupta, you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chi. So I, in your presentation, Will, you had, uh, put down that ADUs are allowed on R1 and R3, but not, not in R2? You are muted.
We, there is no R2 in the coastal zone, so we didn't put that in.
Okay, okay. Another question is, is there a limit of, um, ADUs even in the areas outside of the coastal zone? No?
No, the only, so the, the state has said we should not have quotas. Um, so that is actually precluded outside of the coastal zone. But because it's an LCP policy that's tied directly to resource protection and infrastructure constraints, we are allowed to retain that in the coastal zone. But that's the only place that we can keep that.
That you can do that. And when we, uh, have limit in the county about having 40 permits per year, does that include, uh, the junior ADUs as well as ADUs?
So the 40 unit limit within the coastal zone at present includes both. And I think the consideration that Commissioner Ramirez brought up and, and Steve suggested, um, is that it may make sense to monitor that and revisit it if it seems like we are, um, moving too quickly toward the cap. And also if it seems, you know, we, we can look at how the junior ADUs work within neighborhoods and are they intensifying things? Are they, are they a minimal impact? Are they a greater impact? And, and does it make sense or not to count them? So I think, okay, the ability to kind of revisit that over time, but at present, they do count.
They do count. And if somebody applies, uh, for, my understanding is we could have two attached ADUs, uh, in the primary residence. Is that correct?
Not two attached, so you can have a detached ADU and a junior ADU. So one of them is inside the house entirely and the other one must be completely detached. You cannot combine attached ADUs.
Okay. And those will be, if they are done at the same time, are they considered two permits?
That would be two, correct.
Okay, alright. One other question I had was, um, in the attached ADU, it could be up to 800 square feet.
That is, that is correct.
It says plus we can add another, another 150 square feet for egress, ingress.
So.
Correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Um, so the state, the state provided that extra 150 and they were not clear. And we think we understand why they wanted that. It is for upstairs, um, in general upstairs ADUs that need a landing and stairway and a stairway and that extra square footage allows them that kind of space. Um, however, they did not actually specify that. That's kind of the assumption of what the purpose is, is to make sure that you can create that ADU and have the right size, but still get access to it. So the way we're interpreting it is you have to prove to us that this is only being used for entry and exit. Um, so you can't just bulb out your 800 square foot ADU for an extra 150. We are going to mandate that, you know, you must show us that the only potential use for this is, is entry and exit.
Okay.
Hope the state goes back and clears it up and says, this is actually for balconies and stairwells. Because we, stairways, we think that was the intent, but they just were not clear.
So, so they can't, uh, so, uh, they cannot build a 950 square feet, uh, ADU? Okay. Uh, then I saw there are setbacks, uh, from the side and the back.
Correct.
Specified four feet and, uh, some other, uh, numbers. But there, I didn't, didn't come across anything from the front. What if somebody wants to bu- build it in front?
So as we understand the state regs, they allow us to just apply our normal front setback. So that is what we have done. So the front setback for the zoning district still applies. And the, the regulations say you can be either as far back as the required front setback or if the primary residence is non-conforming and it's within the front setback, you can be only as far forward as the primary residence. So you, the second unit, the ADU can be non-conforming and within the setback if the primary residence is, which allows you to have an attached ADU, um, you know, that might be on the side. But we are still applying the normal front setbacks of the zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. And one other question is, uh, at various places in the report, the staff report, it says 800 square feet or 35%. What, what does that mean? Can you clarify that for me?
So that's 800 square feet is the minimum size. But if the primary residence, for instance, um, is 3,000 square feet, you could have 35% of 3,000 square feet, which would be larger than 800. Um, so the great, basically it's the greater of the two of those.
Greater of the two, okay, okay. So then they can go beyond 800 square feet to?
And up to 1,500 maximum, which is the maximum that has been in the regulations.
That maximum is how much?
1,500 square feet.
1,500. So we specified that?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't come across that, so. Okay. Now, also for, for my benefit, can you explain what is this step back?
Certainly. So that's a little, little confusing. So the state has now said, we must allow the ADU on the ground floor to be as close as four feet from the side and the rear. But we allow ADUs to go up to 26 feet. Um, if, if, uh, even if the zoning district allows 36 feet or 28 feet, the ADU can only be 26 feet. But if you have an ADU that tall, we don't want it to be four feet all the way up. So the step back says at the second story of the ADU, you must pull back further so that you're not looking over your neighbor's property. So that pulls back to a total of 10 feet, um, in the rear and another, an additional foot essentially. So it's five feet on the side, which matches what the, the setbacks were previously in our regulations. So basically on the ground floor, we're meeting the state standards. On the upper floors, we're pulling it back further so it has less impact on surrounding properties.
So, so that setback has to be, step back has to be at 16 feet?
16, you could, 16 or below. If they wanted to pull that below that, they could. But at 16 feet, which is essentially the story.
And the junior ADU is always part of the primary residence?
It has to be entirely within the walls of the primary residence. So not only is it part, but it can't be built attached outside. It has to be entirely. So essentially it's a convert, it's always a conversion.
Okay. And my last question is, what are the rules on owner, perpetual owner occupancy?
So we require them, if they propose a junior ADU, we require them to enter into a deed restriction document. So they record in the deed that as long as that junior ADU exists, the owner of the property must reside on the property. So it's legally binding in their, 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 um, the ownership of the property.
They have to reside in their primary residence or another?
We allow them either. They can reside in, in the ADU or the primary residence. The only stipulation, um, and this comes directly from the state law, the owner must live on the property. It doesn't say precisely where, and we kind of think if the owner wanted to build an ADU and live in the ADU and, and rent out the main house, we don't have any problems with that.
Okay. Thank you very much for explaining all those.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Your Senator Cruz, any questions?
I, I just have a clear, uh, a follow-up question regarding to the, uh, residency requirement. If the owner sells the property, the new owner, uh, will follow the same restriction. Not that, not that when I sell my property, the ADU legality will become illegal, right?
Remains legal and the, um, the deed recordation, the, the legal binding, uh, force that says the owner has to live on it, runs with the land. So the new owner will be subject to that. The ADU remains, but the new owner also has to live on that property.
Okay. And then, um, I just, uh, thank you for the presentation. That was, uh, I think is a great idea. And, um, I am very happy to hear that because we have to give them the same opportunity to everyone and be consistent with the state law. And I think we talked about it in the, the two last previous meeting. Um, I personally, I'm ready to move on and, and, uh, file, um, present a motion to approve this project unless, uh, uh, Chairman, do you have any other ideas or questions somebody want to ask?
I've got some questions. Um, and then it says no standards to apply for our units less than 800 square feet. Which standards? Not all standards?
Well, so the standards still apply. What we can't do is apply any standards that don't allow you to have an 800 square foot. But when you, when, so we say, you can have an 800 square foot ADU, but all the other standards in the, the ADU regulations still apply. and our other standards as applicable would still be enforced as well. But what we can't say is you're over a lot coverage, so you can't make an 800 square foot ADU. It has to be 700 square feet or you're over floor area ratio, so you, you have to make it 600. Basically, we, if you're over your floor area limit, we still have to allow you 800 and only 800. And it still has to meet setbacks, it still has to meet height, it still has to meet all the other regulations. So what the, the new law is saying is simply the, the minimum that you can build size wise in every situation is square foot ADU.
Okay. Unless there's other follow-up questions, I'm prepared to go to public comment. So I'll turn it over to Janice.
Thank you, Chair. We're not opening public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Okay, let's give it a few seconds. I know there are some, some members of the public on the line, but I don't see any hands raised at the moment. Seeing none.
Okay. Motion to close.
Let's close.
I'll second and go for roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Yes.
Chair Hanson.
All right. Do we have any comments? And I'll start off with Commissioner Gupta.
The project looks good to me. All my questions and queries have been answered. So I'm good to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Oh, thank you. The county's unincorporated coastal zone consists of rural areas and far-flung small towns without any significant public transit and a jobs housing imbalance that it's the reverse of the baseline. The Coastal Commission has been urging the county to evaluate and implement land use policies to reduce LCP buildout. And also my, my comment that due to the ADU limit in LCP for the coastal zone, this opportunity should be distributed more fairly by retaining the limit of one ADU per parcel and their prohibition on substandard lots. Basically. I, I think those two items need to be retained or I can't vote for this. Thank you, that's all.
I had intermittent transmission, I think I picked up everything. Was everybody else clear what she was saying?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was my connection. All right, Commissioner Ramirez.
No, I, I'm, I'm okay the way it is drafted. I think. You know, I, I do have the concern that at some point we may have to revisit the junior projects, but I, I like the way it stands at the moment. I, I understand the concerns of Ms. Ketchup. I'm gonna have to disagree on that. So that's my opinion on this.
And Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Um, yes, Chairman, as I explained, I'm, I'm just ready for a motion to approve. I, I consider the opportunity to build ADU, junior ADU in consistency with the state law that faced and responds to the reality of the housing crisis that we are living in, in California. And I think, I think it's a great opportunity for everyone to have the same equal right and opportunities to, 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 to be able to do what other part of the states are doing. And I, for that, I commend Stephen staff for like having that proactive approach and, 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 and bringing this to a consistency.
Personally, I'm kind of torn on this. I recognize and understand and really feel for the housing crisis that we have. And I, at the same time, I also share the same concerns as Commissioner Ketchum has. So I, I look for a a motion for acceptance of this.
I'm ready for a motion.
Please.
That the planning commission recommended the San Mateo County Board of Supervisor adopt an ordinance amending the county accessory dwelling unit regulation applicable to the county coastal zone, chapter 25.51 of the county son regulation and amending section 3.22 of the county local coastal program to comply with the recent changes to the state law at described in county file number PLN 2020 00144.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. And Janice, can you go through roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Sorry. Pushed the wrong button. I, I am in favor of it, but I do share the concern that Commissioner Ketchum has. And we may have to revisit this at some point. So yes.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Before I vote, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that I would vote for this if the, if it retains the limit of one ADU per parcel and prohibition on substandard lots. But as it is, I vote no.
Chairman Hanson.
I'm gonna go with same reasoning as Ketchum and say no.
Okay.
So it passes three, two. We'll move on to our third item of which we have an appeal to to the decision of which we'll have a staff report, we'll have the appellant followed by the applicant.
Chairman Hanson. Yes, I didn't. Item three has been postponed. I apologize if you didn't see the notice. We, there was a inadvertent mistake made with the noticing where the mail-out version of the notice didn't include all the pages. So the appellant and applicant unfortunately weren't appropriately notified. So we've postponed the hearing on this item and we'll move it to the next meeting. So we apologize for that, but I thought it was important to correct the problem before moving forward.
Okay, then I'll turn it back to you for the next items on the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Hanson. And I wanted to thank Will Gibbs for all his work on the ADU ordinances and on our housing element. There's a lot of work that goes in that year end and year out and Will does a great job. So thank you, Will. So I don't have any correspondence to report to you today. Uh-oh, looks like my time's up. Or somebody's cookies are ready. No correspondence to report, so I'll move on to the next meeting and whether or not we want to have a study session. Currently, we've got two items on the agenda, including the appeal that's postponed from today as well as a proposed subdivision of a 60-acre parcel near Crystal Springs Road in the Highlands where they want to divide the 60-acre parcel into three, about three-quarter acre parcels for future residential development, leaving a remainder parcel of about 58 acres. And this subdivision will also involve the review and certification of a mitigated negative declaration. There's quite a bit of community interest in this proposal. And so I envision it could be a lengthy hearing and therefore not recommending that we conduct a study session at the next meeting. So unless there's questions, I'm happy to move on to the director's report. And just real briefly, I wanted to update you on the CZU fire recovery efforts. We've been working very closely with federal and state agencies to address the debris removal that needs to occur to make the burned areas safe. The good news is that we have gotten a commitment from US EPA to conduct the phase one debris removal, which could contain hazardous materials. That's one of the biggest concerns is hazardous materials that could be contained in these ashes. And then there'll be a phase two cleanup and we're working with the various agencies to figure out how to make that happen in the most efficient way. We've also been collaborating with other departments within the county to provide whatever assistance we can to property owners who have experienced damage. We just want to make sure that everybody's safe before they rush to the properties because we still have falling trees, ash pits, all sorts of hazards, propane tanks that may have been damaged. So we are trying to make this first phase cleanup happen as quickly as possible so that we can then move to the second phase of working with the property owners to get it all cleaned up. The resource conservation districts really stepped up and they are eager to provide assistance to property owners and to help communicate with property owners about the status of things and figuring out how we can help them clean up and rebuild. So there's going to be a whole lot of work still involved in that. The other part that we're working on as a priority is assessing the potential for debris flows. You may recall after the big fires in Santa Barbara, the debris flow that damaged lots of homes in the Montecito corridor. And fortunately for San Mateo County, we did not have the same amount of very high temperature burns that Santa Cruz. Santa Cruz County has some very severe risks of major debris flows. There are some areas that we're concerned about in San Mateo County and we are trying to complete our assessment of those areas so we can figure out how, what actions need to be taken to protect life and safety in the potential of a debris flow. So that's all I have on the fire, unless there's questions about the fire, I'll move on.
May I?
Yes.
Just more for my understanding. Is this all being done by the county or do the cities in the county also pitch in?
I've got to say, it has been an amazing effort that has involved all levels of government, from the federal government down to the local government. San Mateo and Santa Cruz County, like the other counties who are experiencing fires, have stood up what we call our emergency operations center. And that's kind of the incident control center for a major event where we have representatives from all agencies at all levels of government. So we're receiving a lot of assistance. For example, in the first phase of the cleanup, as I noted, the US EPA is going to provide some very essential services. This is all being coordinated by the California Office of Emergency Services. So there's a real partnership amongst state agencies, federal agencies and local agencies when we get together in these emergency operations centers. And then, you know, we all abide by mutual aid principles and help each other out. So it's not necessarily limited to staff from this county. Just like we would contribute resources to another county that may need assistance in such events. San Mateo County and Santa Cruz County has received immense amount of mutual aid in this event. And it's really amazing. There, following the fires, there was actually firefighters driving out from New Jersey to come help us. So, but yeah, when it comes to the cleanup and the rebuild, it's going to involve multiple agencies at all levels of government.
Thank you, that's great.
The other couple of things I wanted to alert you on include the, that tonight the Midcoast Community Council will be meeting to receive a report from the Planning and Building Department about the feedback we've received on Connect the Coastside. So we look forward to discussing that with them and then moving forward with the next phase of the review, which will involve future workshop in front of this commission. I also wanted to let you know that we've been spending a lot of time working on our online permitting system. Some of you are already familiar with the Exella system. We invested that, in that and went initially live with it in about 2013. And our experience has been that there are a lot of improvements that could be made to the way in which the system is configured to make it work more effectively and efficiently both for our staff and to be more user-friendly to our customers who would like to apply for permits online. And we've been making good progress. We are targeting the next calendar year, January of 2021 as a rollout date. And we are quickly approaching the stage at which we will be doing some testing of some prototypes. And I know some of the commissioners may find it valuable to use the search function in Exella to track information. My guess is Commissioner Ketchum, some of the data that you presented today is based on what you found on Exella. And so I'd like to invite you all, if you're interested, to participate in the testing phase so you can share your thoughts about what I hope will be a real state-of-the-art system that we'll be implementing next year. So that's up and coming, I'll keep you posted and you don't have to volunteer right now. You can.
Love volunteering.
So that's it. I, you know, I like to keep you updated on board of supervisors' actions. Will already mentioned that they approved the non-coastal ADU. So that was the most recent board meeting that I've been to. And I don't have anything on any near-term agendas for the board, so nothing to report there. So that concludes my report for today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. On the timeline of Connect the Coastside, does the comprehensive transportation management plan get submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification? Or is it, is there a separate process to update the LCP to conform where needed? How does that work?
Right. So as we talked about in the prior item, if the county were to desire to change the current quota, annual limit on development, the Coastal Commission's approval of that.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm. I'm talking about the comprehensive transportation management plan, not the ADUs.
No, I get it. I get it. I, I, it's just it came up in conjunction with our discussion about the ADUs, right? I think you mentioned, I, I forget the connection. In any event, we have this limit and according to the LCP, the annual growth limit, that limit can't change unless and until the county submits and the Coastal Commission certifies a comprehensive transportation management plan. And we have named that company, EMP, Connect the Coastside. So they're one and the same. And we have named that comp, EMP, Connect the Coastside. So they're one and the same. Um, and we, as we talked about in the last item, have no intention at this point of changing the growth limit. So because we do not intend to change the growth limit, there's no requirement in our LCP that the Coastal Commission certify Connect the Coastside. Uh, that being said, Connect the Coastside, um, has, I, has taken a close look at the LCP policies that currently apply to development as it relates to transportation, circulation issues and has identified areas in which we maybe could create better policies. And, um, so I envision that as part of the implementation component of Connect the Coastside, that we may indeed pursue amendments to our LCP to implement certain recommendations of Connect the Coastside related to LCP policy. But other than that, um, there is no requirement for Coastal Commission certification of Connect the Coastside.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions? If not, we're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Bye.
Thank you.